Second council briefing. Tonight, we have two primary items to go over. The first item that we're going to go over is the city's ERP planning program oversight and implementation support initiative. I will turn it over to AJ Soto, who will tell you a little bit about this, but this is the ERP conversion that the city is currently working on. And we are looking for some outside assistance and AJ, I'll let you take it from there.
Thanks, Mike. Hello. Good evening, council. As as most of you are aware, the city undertook an ERP conversion process several years ago. And we have run into, I would call it delay, for lack of a better term. And we were supposed to go live within two years, and here we are in year four, probably on the cusp of year five, and we still have not gone live with our utility billing solution. Or our HR payroll modules. We are live in our financial system, but we are also still running our legacy financial system in parallel. Which has caused tremendous strain on the finance department. We began our discussions with council back in June of 2020. To talk about onboarding a firm like Gartner to help us conduct an external assessment. They conducted it and they provided the results of that assessment to council on January 11th. Since myself, Ashley and a member of our business analysis team. We've been working with Carlton and Ateesh and the folks over at Gartner to develop the scope of work that we're going to present to you tonight, which we view as the next step in our engagement with Gartner. And it is our hope and our belief that these next steps with Gartner will allow us to fully and successfully implement the remaining. Original ERP functions of the city, which is utility billing and the HR payroll modules. So with that, you've all been provided with a copy of the full PowerPoint presentation from Gartner. Carlton is going to run through a select. A selection of slides there and I'll turn it over to him. Carlton?
Great. Thank you, AJ. Appreciate those opening remarks and good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all again. As AJ mentioned, my name is Carlton MacArthur and I'm the Gartner Consulting Managing Partner that worked with you previously. To conduct an assessment of your ERP implementation and will be working with you moving forward as we look to help you with. Being able to successfully implement the utility billing as well as HR and payroll modules. Moving forward. So I'm going to pull up slides on my screen, but I do understand that you have previously been provided a copy of of our proposal. Knowing that we have somewhat of a limited time, there are few slides that I would really like to focus. The presentation on. So if you recall going back to to last summer when we did. An assessment of the Tyler Munus ERP implementation, we provided a set of recommendations for how the program should be. Re-initiated in order to move forward successfully. Some of those recommendations included providing more program assurance and oversight. Of how the contractor was operating, putting in place a new governance model. Also making sure that you have clearly defined requirements and success criteria. So that you can effectively judge how well the implementation. Is being executed. Subsequent to that, we did prepare a proposal. That not only drills down those recommendations in further detail, but hopefully provides you a clear sense of what's required in order to successfully restart the project. How we would work with you in a very collaborative fashion as well with Tyler. To drive execution of this engagement. And then what it would take from a resourcing perspective for us to be able to be able to do this successfully. So as AJ mentioned, we're going to walk you through two major tasks. That would be necessary for the configuration and implementation. Of your Tyler Munus, HR and payroll and potentially their utility billing system. Or module, should you continue down the path with them. So as you could see on our slide, there's a synopsis of what each one of these tasks will include, and I will get into the details. Of that in the subsequent slides that I'll present to you. So first off, our understanding is that the city would like to move forward with implementation of the utility billing module. First, we do understand that you are in the process of bringing in new personnel that will support your HR. Function and knowing that you want to get that leadership in place before. Charging down that path, we're going to start with utility billing. And where you are with utility billing, I would say is not very unique or different with other clients that have tried to implement utility billing modules. We see with a number of municipalities that some of the common challenges that plague these projects are. Not having sufficient buy-in from stakeholders or the business leadership, not having clearly defined requirements. Not really knowing what you're buying because that's not necessarily your business. And based on a number of engagements of similar size, scope and complexity that we've. Executed for other municipalities, we do have lessons learned, codified best practices as well as other tangible assets that we can bring in as an accelerator to make sure that you're getting off. To a very fast start. So we have a five step approach that we are proposing. To actually work with you around utility billing. I will note that three of these tasks are optional depending on the outcome of task one. So I'd just like to spend a few moments giving you a little bit of details around our approach. So given where you are with utility billing today, we do understand that you have some requirements that were previously developed. With Tyler, however, given the collective understanding around what your those requirements were from a business capability perspective. Tyler was not able to successfully do the configuration and subsequent implementation of that module. So we're going to help you take a step back. So first off. We're really going to work with you to define the end-to-end business capabilities that go into utility billing. Be it accounts, payables, receivables, payment methods, calculation methods. What are all of the things? That encompass the full scope of utility billing. And we're going to document that in what's called a business capability model. And that business capability model allows you to see all of the business functions that go into utility billing. But it also helps us start to bring together the alignment around what you need from a business perspective. As well as a technology perspective. So we want to make sure that we we know your business and we capture the universe of that business. But then we want to start capturing what are the technology requirements that you need moving forward in order for your business to be successful. So we would do a gap analysis of the existing requirements that you have today. Compare them to requirements that we have developed from other like engagements in the past to determine what works well. What requirements are necessary moving forward? What may need to be abandoned because the requirements that you have today were developed three to five years ago. And the market has changed vastly since that point in time. So we really want to make sure that there are clearly defined concise business and and functional requirements around utility billing. Then we would be able to take those requirements and work with you. To look at what are the the capabilities that you would get out of Tyler Munus's utility billing tool. And we would ask Tyler to actually be able to demonstrate how well their tool can or cannot meet those requirements. And at that point, I think the city will have a critical decision to make. In terms of, does it feel comfortable with Tyler's ability to meet those requirements? Or do you need to part ways with Tyler and look at acquiring a new utility billing solution? And I would say that Gartner has a really good understanding of the utility billing marketplace. We understand the various strengths and weaknesses, and in this case with with Tyler. Around what their module can or cannot do. And we would help you make that decision if you in fact decide to move away from Tyler. And I would say that that is not a decision that needs to be taken very lightly, considering the amount of time and and money that has been invested. In utility billing as it stands today. However, if there are fundamental gaps in regards to their ability to meet your business requirements, then we would advise you if in fact you do need to. Consider a different path. And if you do need to consider a different path. That's when we would start executing the optional task in conjunction with the city. And the first off being helping you develop a contracts negotiation strategy. With the ultimate intent of either being able to get a refund. From Tyler because they were not able to successfully implement the utility billing module. Or what's probably most likely is getting a credit. For the work that they have done. So our understanding is the contract that you have today with Tyler was front loaded. So you paid upfront or in advance for the various services that they were supposed to provide. In terms of configuring the utility billing module. For the licensing fees, there was an upfront payment structure. For that, as well as some of the O and M cost. So we would really want to delve into that contract in detail to help understand what are the terms and conditions. Regarding the scope of utility billing. What were the costs? And then what were the services that were supposed to be provided? The focus there is really looking for how we could exploit potential weaknesses in their contracts. And look for areas where there could be the potential to hold them liable for. A default or lack of services provided. Those all will all provide you negotiating leveraging tactics for how you would want to work with them if in fact you do decide to move away. From Tyler as your utility billing solution as well as the systems integrator. And we would work with you over the course of approximately what we consider to be three to four weeks to help you come up with that negotiating strategy and tactics. In a framework by which you could go into those negotiations with Tyler. It's also very important to note that Gartner is not going to be at the negotiating table with the city. We will be operating behind the scenes. In providing you input in terms of how you need to go about doing that negotiations. And as you are going back and forth with Tyler, we will be providing you. Guidance and input along the way to help you to maintain your, hopefully your your advantage or your strong position from a negotiation standpoint. The duration that you see there being approximately three to four weeks. That's what we estimate is the time that would be required for Gartner to provide you the support, not necessarily the negotiation timeframe. Overall, that's going to be dependent upon. How frequently you can engage with Tyler. The amount of time that it may take your or the city's procurement and or legal teams to look at. Let's say feedback from Tyler, feedback on there and as well. So there's going to be some back and forth, but all that being said. That's not to represent the entire period of time that it would take for the overall negotiations. And then we can also work with you to create the RFP bid package or solicitation. And steps two and three can in fact be done in parallel, and I would. Recommend that you do so so that you can collapse the amount of time that it actually takes to execute this phase of the project. So what we would do is work with you to actually develop a solicitation that you can take to market. To understand what providers may be able to meet your requirements in the best manner possible. And this would be a combined RFP bid package or solicitation. That would be for the acquisition of a utility billing software solution. As well as a systems integrator. And we go to market with the combined solicitation because we we often see that systems integrators want to bring in. The solution that they think is best suited for your requirements as opposed to having a solution prescribed to them. We also see in this marketplace that you do have providers and. The systems in or the actual RF. The actual utility billing solution being provided all in one. So one example is a company that we worked with in the past is called Coggsdale, and that's not to endorse them. But they do the they do their own implementation and that that is the niche that they have. And in the instance that we're currently working, Tyler is doing the configuration of their own solution. So we don't decouple those two. Based upon the reasons that I just noted. So we would work with you to develop the package. Once the RFP bid package goes out. If there are questions that the proposers may have, we would actually work with you to craft responses to those questions. And once we get the the RFP bid package back in terms of proposals, we could go into what we call Fender evaluation and selection. That's where we would work with you here again to make sure that a comprehensive assessment is done. Of each of the proposals. Looking at the technical feasibility of the solution that they are proposing. Looking at the pricing so that we get apples to apples comparison and making sure that you're getting. The same solution. So we would look at the bill of materials that they would provide you to make sure that it encompass all of the tech same technical. Specs that encompass the same scope of work. And also making sure that is going to meet your business requirements. We could also help you go through a down select process whereby we would help you invite a certain number of vendors. Into do orals and demos where they could be able to actually demonstrate or prove out. How well their solution meets your unique or differentiating requirements and not necessarily the commoditized requirements that all utility billing systems. Would be able to to execute. We would provide you an RP evaluation framework so that you could in fact do the. Evaluations of the proposals that you receive so that we can do the selection as well as the demonstration scenarios and use cases. That would be part of the oral's presentation. Hey Dan, I see you have your hand up. You have a question I can answer for you?
Yes. Question one is, did you say how long Tyler was overdue? On reaching their project goal with the billing?
I I didn't say how long they were overdue. If I remember correctly, the utility billing module was supposed to go live in 2018. And AJ, you might want to correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think it's about three years past due. The actual implementation or the proposed implementation date initially.
Okay, then I guess my other question would be for, I don't, Mike, you know, Chris Ambrosio is here tonight?
He is. He's on the line. At least he should be.
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, hey, Chris. Have you had a chance to look at our contract with Tyler by chance?
I have, and I did that several months ago. But recently started to look at it again, just as AJ approached me. Approached me with Gartner's presentation information, but I have not had the chance to look at it in detail as as I did five, six months ago.
Okay, that's that's the only question I have for now.
Yeah, but but Council Janson, let me add that everything that's been spoken about so far is very encouraging if it gets to the point where under item two. Of the support approach, contract, review and negotiation. I was very encouraged to hear what what was just presented because that's that sounds like good teamwork if we do get if council wants us to proceed that way. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so once you've selected. The systems integrator as well as the utility billing software solution. And the integrator goes into configuration, then that's when we would provide you the oversight and program assurance. And said slightly differently, that's what we call independent verification and validation, IBNB. So we will be looking over the shoulders. Of whomever the systems integrator is with the intent of making sure that they're meeting their contractual obligations. That they are providing you a utility billing solution that in fact in lines aligns with your requirements and is meeting your needs. And that they are also in accordance with with best practices. The intent here is to proactively identify risks or issues. That may be underlying the SI's execution of the project. To be able to identify them as early in it in advance as possible. And then work with you and the systems integrator to put mitigation strategies in place. So that you stay on schedule within budget and your your technical and functional business requirements are being met successfully. Okay, with this particular step, we are estimating that the period of performance will be approximately six months. However, that it will be contingent upon how long it actually takes the the integrator. To do the configuration and implementation. So if it goes beyond six months, then I think we have two options, one being extend our support or. We can provide you all coaching throughout this process. So that you can actually assume that at the end of six months. So we do have standard. Let's say templates and tools that we use to be able to assess or assess how well projects are being performed. So we will do that knowledge transfer with you along the way so that you can in fact. Sort of learn by doing and to be able to provide oversight yourself moving forward if you would like to do so. Now pause for a second just to see if there are any questions, comments, concerns around utility billing. Hey Chuck, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, so I went back to the notes from the January 11th briefing where we talked about this. And in that briefing, you kind of gave three options, which would be staying the course, starting over or the hybrid approach. And the hybrid approach involved. Keeping the HR payroll and uni and doing a separate utility billing. And at that time. You kind of, I don't know if you said it flat out or hinted at it that utility billing is not Tyler's strong suit. And that was that option C that hybrid approach would be that that's one going forward. So I'm just kind of wanting to to see, you know, is that still the case? Because it seems like we've kind of already. Gotten through part of one and kind of know that Tyler's not. It seems like in to me that in your opinion already that Tyler's not the one that we need to be going forward with with utility billing. So I just kind of wanted to to kind of backtrack to what we talked about, you know, back on January 11th and and see if the thoughts were still the same or if. If there's new information that, you know, might put Tyler back in the mix and make a hybrid approach not as. Attractive as it was then.
Right. Tyler's not a niche utility billing player. I wouldn't say that that is necessarily their their core business. When you look at Munis, it's really ERP around HR, finance, procurement. General back office functions, utility billing tends to be much more specialized and a complex business function that that is executed. That being said, I do think they have. A viable option. They are viable option. However, it's really going to come down to the requirements that the city has. So if the city is willing to live with some of the out of the box functionality. That are commoditized utility billing functions, then then Tyler may in fact be be able to meet your needs. However, if the city has very unique a differentiating requirements that you don't want to pivot off of, then. We'd have to, we'd have to make an objective assessment. As to whether or not you should consider them moving forward. So, you know, we're neutral going into this. And we're really going to let the business requirements dictate what needs to occur going forward. So it's going to be in a very objective based decision. Based on. One, the requirements that you have, how unique or differentiating they are. And then is the city going to be adamant about sticking to the ways of doing business or are they more or you are more apt to try to use out of the box functionality? Did it answer your question, Chuck?
Yes, it did. I think it might go back to it at the end, but just wanted to ask it while we were on utility billing.
Hi Sandy, you have your hand up?
Hi Carlton. I just want to make a quick statement. In a previous life, I did a lot with project management and I like what you're saying, especially with the requirements piece because. That's that's so important in making sure that you. You get what you were planning to get in the end. And so I think. Considering how long it's been since the requirements were were done, which you said was several years ago. I think it is extremely important that we look at those requirements again, and hopefully that will help us. With making the right decision going forward, whether it's, you know, changing completely or a hybrid or whatever. So. I really like what you're saying and thank you so much for. For what you guys are doing to help us through this.
No, no, we really love working with you all and very excited to support you moving forward. But but to your your comment Sandy, if you look further back in the proposal that we submitted, we did includes like include some sample. Requirements. And if you look at those requirements, those are business requirements. They're not technical requirements. So we're really focusing on understanding. The business and the needs, and then we match the technology to meet the need. So we're not taking a technology first approach. We want to really understand the business. In terms of how it's being done and then what technology is going to optimize your capabilities to provide utility billing support. Any other questions?
AJ, did you want to say something?
No, sir. I had really wanted to just kind of address the point that Councilmember Stokes had had brought up when when Carlton was speaking, you know, what's. Sorry, that would be my my dog playing with her toy there. One moment. So what I mean, what's, I just want to keep something in mind too. And the point I want to drive home about the benefit of having a partner like Gartner here is that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, Ashley and I can put together a CAFR, we can put together a budget document, you know, we can advise on. Financial matters. But having a partner like Gartner to help walk us through this ERP process because ERP is not our our core business is extremely helpful. Because it will, it will help avoid us having to come back to you two years from now and have this same conversation. You know, which is the position we find ourselves in now. So I at least wanted to address that point to Councilmember Stokes because. You know, the question about what Gartner's thoughts are on UB and its functionality with Tyler and everything, those are those are very fair questions. And I'll tell you, I mean, four years ago with the proliferation of certain payment methods that didn't exist then that do now. I mean, you know, you have people making payments on their we can't even take credit card payments at our utility billing counter yet. So, we need to get there and I think a big piece of this is going to be revisiting the business capability modeling and to assess what the true business needs are of the organization.
Thanks AJ. Okay, if there are no questions remaining on utility billing, you still should be able to see my slide, which provides an overview of our our approach for supporting HR and payroll. Here again, knowing that you've previously started down this path with Tyler regarding these two modules within the MUNIS application, it would really be focused on making sure that you have a clearly defined plan slash roadmap for how this is going to move forward. One of the observations that we had previously, one is that the requirements here again were not comprehensively defined. But then two, there was not a lot of, lot of structured project management around the execution of the project previously. And that's not to be critical of what was done by the city in the past. Again, it's not abnormal for us to see these sorts of projects to get off schedule. Then we have to come in and help do some course correction. But the lack of clearly defined requirements and the right amount of planning and oversight were two or three contributing factors that led to HR and payroll not being successfully implemented previously. So, what we would do in this case here again is baseline the current state of the HR and payroll implementation. Said differently, where did you leave off with this implementation? How far along did you get? We already understand some of the underlying factors for why you wound up to where you are. But where in fact are you? So that would entail looking at the capabilities that have been accepted by the city previously. So, as an example, one of the capabilities that may have been accepted is employee self-service or benefits administration or time and attendance. So what was accepted and what was not accepted? So we want to make sure that we have a clear point from which the project is going to be reinitiated so that there is no ambiguity between the city and Tyler where you can say, here are the requirements and business capabilities that we have accepted based on what you developed for us previously. Or conversely, here's what's not accepted. So we would help you build a plan to take you from where you are today through the full implementation of the HR and payroll modules. Here again, we would work with you, once we have that baseline, this, then we could say, here's the remaining capability that needs to be configured. Here are the requirements that need to be configured in order to meet our business capabilities. And then we would codify that into a detailed plan or roadmap where you would see each of the major work streams that need to be executed in order to implement HR and payroll. And by work stream, it could be data cleansing. So what needs to be done around your data in order for it to be successfully put into the new system? Data conversion, training, change management, and all of the tasks that go into configuration. We would work with you as well with Tyler to come up with this plan that would have milestones so that you can evaluate progress along the way as well as critical success factors that allows you to determine that the project is being successfully executed. And then we would document that into a high level schedule or integrated master schedule that really details the steps that need to be done, the dependencies between those steps so that you can in fact do structured project management around how the project is being executed. We think this will take approximately six weeks to get completed. And at the outcome, at the outset, I'm sorry, at the, as an outcome, the delivers would be those refined requirements, the implementation plan, as well as an integrated master schedule. So, once you actually go into configuration of that system, we would use a rinse and repeat approach around the program oversight and program assurance. That specifically being, again, making sure that we are reviewing the work products and deliverables that they are providing you to make sure that they are meeting their targeted objectives and outcomes, making sure that the project is staying on schedule according to the plan that was developed, that they're, that they are meeting your requirements, and then providing feedback on their deliverables and support that they are providing you. Again, here, the intent is to be able to make sure that you're staying on schedule within budget that we're proactively identifying risk and issues and coming up with the appropriate mitigation strategies to resolve them so that you don't find yourself in another situation as you were previously. So do a couple slides here that just give details on the activities, responsibilities. But I would say, in essence, what I just walked you through is exactly what we would do to support the city with this implementation. All right, questions, comments, or concerns? How's that?
Hey, this is kind of more for AJ. Um, back in, when we discussed this in January, we were going to get financial spent to date. Um, do you have that information available that we can at least know what we've spent to date on this before we talk about spending another $700 plus thousand?
Yes, Councilmember. And and let me apologize in advance for my dog. She's very active in the background, so she may make another appearance right in the middle while I'm talking to you guys. So, right after the council briefing on January 11th, Ashley had provided an email to the council, a breakout of the cost we've incurred. So, as of January 2021, now there's my dog again, hold on. As of January 2021, we have incurred $1.9 million in obligations to our Tyler contract. We have spent 1.375 million of that 1.9 million. There's a current unexpendited balance of 575,000 with Tyler. So that 1.3 million includes those upfront costs that you heard Carlton mention earlier and how our contract with Tyler was structured, where we paid upfront for the software and for the licensing and things like that, even though we're not live yet on utility billing or HR or payroll.
Thank you.
Hi Dan.
Hey, Mike, can I get your opinion on it? Do you want, speaking as to what your thoughts are?
Is there a specific question or just my thoughts on how to proceed forward?
Proceeding forward.
I concur that we need an outside partner to help walk us through the process of these last two modules. When I first got here, obviously, the city was in the midst of the ERP project. And what I saw over the first year was, I think the staff for the most part was a little bit inexperienced because we had never gone through an ERP conversion before. It's not something that is done on a regular basis, it's typically generational within an institution. So the chances of having people who have been through it before and have been through it in municipal government is actually a little slim. And while the financials were up and running, clearly, the human resources department was running into roadblocks and there was a concern for utility billing to ultimately go down the path of of trying to go live with a system that was questionable as to whether or not it would work. And I think that had something to do a little bit with the fact that Tyler and MUNIS had come out with a new platform within which to operate and we were having a little bit of difficulty getting one to one apples to apples comparisons of what we would need for utility billing versus what was being done for other municipalities. And that was not favorable to move forward with utility billing at that time. With that being said, Counselor Jansen, we're also a small organization. We're not a large city that has 1,000 plus employees where you can dedicate a dozen or so specifically to an ERP conversion and not have them worry about what their normal day to day activities are going to be. In our case, if we're telling someone you need to be working four to eight hours a day on ERP conversion, then that's four to eight hours a day that they're not doing their normal job. And if you notice in the agenda memo that was provided, we do also have a line item shown for temporary staffing resources for city departments that would be impacted by this next phase of the ERP conversion. One of the things that I would comment on, and I think Counselor Golding hit the nail on the head, I've got a bit of project management experience coming into this position as well. And I wanted to make sure that before we came to council, we had crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is with what we thought was necessary to move forward on the project. I do, I do not want to be in a position of coming back to council 12 to 24 months from now and saying we missed something. So we've been having a lot of internal conversations to make sure that we have the right internal players that understand what their role will be going forward on what we're, what we're calling ERP 2.0 to make sure that we're comfortable with the sequence, which is why we switched it to utility billing next, followed by HR instead of HR followed by utility billing. We want to make sure that the new HR director gets on board and that one of our senior positions is refilled before we continue with the HR module. And we feel that utility billing is the right place to start because of the fact that we need to go back and look at the selection criteria or the performance criteria for the software that was originally specked out as Carlton pointed to somewhere in the four to five year ago range and see if that is still applicable in order to move forward. So while I'm not happy with the dollar amount that we are preparing to approach you with for authorization, just because of what has already been spent to date, I do think it is the right way for the city to proceed at this point in time. Rather than to say, let's just scrap everything we've done from here and start over. I do think that there are some viable, some viable elements of the Tyler MUNIS platform. And I think those will be fleshed out as we go through these next two steps.
Yeah, I kind of worry about them providing a product that might be antiquated already. You know, don't hand me something that's three years old and say, here, here's our new product, you know?
And and I don't think the issue is an antiquated product. I think one of the issues, and I hope I don't speak out of turn on on this format, but when we went with Tyler MUNIS and they they changed the platform just before we started implementation, there were a lot of new elements that had yet to be fully tested in the public sector environment. And as a result, the the finance module was able to get through those elements. But when we got to HR, there were some hiccups. And like I said previously, we were not able to find an apples to apples comparison for something like Beaches Energy Utility Billing and actually see where it had been implemented and was working appropriately. There were other communities that were in the process of trying to implement it, but no one wanted to be the first one to go live and risk, in our case, 35,000 utility billing customers having their bills messed up. We want to make sure that when we go live, it's going to work and work correctly. So, I think that's where the expertise of Gartner comes into play with with understanding how Gartner, how Tyler has worked in the past with their customer base and being able to find us those analogies. And I think you heard Carlton say, not just making sure that their system's going to work, but having them come in and give us the appropriate demonstrations so that we fully understand the capability of the software, make sure that it will work for our needs. And if it looks like it's going to get us to the 90 or 95th percentile of what we're looking for, then maybe that's what we need to go forward. And if it's less than that threshold or less than the critical functions that we need, then maybe we do need to look at another product. But we won't know until we do that exercise.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for Carlton? And Carlton, if you could take us off the screen share so that the rest of us could see all the council members. I think the, I see Counselor Stokes has his hand raised.
This is for you because you just kind of talked about making sure we have all of our ducks in a row kind of before we get going. Um, on the assumption CO JB's participation, have you already got a project manager? Will that be you? Have we already gotten to that point? That seems very important in this whole process with Gartner.
It will not be me, but we do have a defined individual and position in house that will be the project manager. They will be our point person for the project going forward. And we will give them the authority that they need as the project manager to make decisions rather than having to stop to go to either a steering committee or coming to me every time they run into a hurdle that they need a question answered on. That was something we talked about a couple of months ago. That it's one thing to assign a project manager, you need to give them the authority to be the project manager.
Get two thumbs up for me on that one. So, thank you.
So I think our requested direction to council for tonight was, is there any additional information that you need to see or hear about before we bring this item back to council for formal consideration? And I think Counselor Stokes had asked about the expenditures to date, which we had provided, I think, by email a couple of months ago. Is there anything else that you need as part of a final memo that we would bring forward to you? Hearing none. AJ, I think you've got your direction. We'll be bringing this back to council for formal consideration. To Carlton and Nitesh from Gartner, thank you very much for your attendance on the call tonight, we greatly appreciate it. And with that being said, we'll move on to the second item of the night.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for our next item, I'm pretty much going to give a handoff to the city attorney here in just a second. As you know, we've been working on a draft ordinance for micro mobility devices. The city attorney has taken a lot of input, not just from what was the lone operator within our jurisdiction, Mr. Kirk DeWitt, but also consistently meeting with all of the departments who would be impacted by this ordinance to get their feedback and also getting feedback from the city council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris and he can talk to you a little bit about the draft that's in front of you and we'll hear what type of feedback you want to provide. Chris, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mike. Um, so we began the drafting of the ordinance following council's instruction after the temporary moratorium ordinance was adopted in place. We've reviewed it a little bit during different discussions. But now we finally have our first working draft in terms of the foundation of what the final ordinance would consist of. But there are a lot of other topics to share and discuss with you that aren't drafted into this first working draft. And since the time that we submitted this ordinance, we've done other research. I've spoken to council members about some of the issues and items that are relevant to this whole field. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have or I can walk you through the ordinance or you can ask me questions that you develop about the ordinance. And I would suggest that this was just an initial framework to get this this topic or this item back to council as you did direct me to move this project ahead of other projects. So, we did that and wanted to at least get a working copy in your hands so we could move the topic forward. That I think it'd be best if I perhaps answer your questions or Um, that I think it'd be best if I perhaps answer your questions or I can start to walk through the, the topic headings of the ordinance, however you'd like for me to do that. It's, it's a pretty big project, so it's really difficult to figure out like where to start with you. Or I can share with you some of the research that we have found that, that is outside and beyond this ordinance. Some of the concerns that we have, I can offer the, uh, some of the other department heads to speak to you and answer your questions. I'm not sure. What do, what do you suggest, Mike?
Uh, it looks like councillor Jansen has a question, so we'll start with him.
Okay, okay.
Uh, the only question I had was you had mentioned having these vendors uh bonded or posting a bond. Was, is that still on the table in?
Right. So in my discussions and meetings with the department directors, bonds were most likely not going to be part of the ordinance. We were going to be requiring um that the vendor would pay fees. The, the purpose for the bond was going to be essentially for any costs that the city incurred for purposes of retrieving, removing, storing devices. And we decided that a fee payment system would be most likely the, the most practical for the department, meaning if the vendor was failing to pick up a scooter that was left unattended on any public right-of-way and the city public works or police department um removed it, moved it to the fleet yard, stored it and held it for a certain period of time, perhaps anything up to twenty-four hours or more. Then the fees would accrue that that vendor would have to pay um the police department or public works. Retrieval fee, removal fee, storage fee. That's how the city would recruit the costs rather than having a bond already in place. So if the vendor wanted to um get its device back, its valuable device back, well, it would have to pay the fees associated with what effort the city put out.
Okay, um, it, just as a matter of opinion, as a one member of the council, I, instead of going through it, you know, line by line, I think that if you would just, for me, I'd like to hear what your research has found, uh, more of a summation. Cause I'd be interested in hearing what, what other cities were doing, you know, only having limited knowledge of what's, what I've seen in Tallahassee and Gainesville, now those cities. Some of it I didn't like, but I saw, but I also saw where we're limited to vendors, two, two vendors at a hundred and twenty-five scooters apiece. So.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
So, okay, great. So some of, some of the thoughts and research and discussions that I've had involve a lot of many concerns, quite frankly. And um, let me add that I've spoken to several or at least five of our attorneys that represent municipalities throughout the state. They have a long history, decades long collectively of representing municipalities throughout the state. Um, so they know the legal workings of a municipality and local governments. And they're also actively representing municipalities. And all of them have uniformly advised me to suggest that we ban these devices. Um, they have come from the perspective, these attorneys have come from the perspective of seeing what is happening in their own cities that they practice in and where their offices and homes are, but also the insight that they have into other cities that they work with or represent. Um, they've had, um, they strongly suggest that it's turning into quite a problem. Um, that it became more of a problem than their home cities or some of the cities that they work with anticipated. It seems to be such a new topic, a new issue um that isn't one of those typical municipal problems that can be confronted and categorized and handled properly. A lot of the control is placed on in regulation is actually placed in the vendor's hands. And you know, we may draft the most perfect ordinance, but what we're finding is that the operation of the, these devices are out there on the city streets and on, you know, in the city uh roadways and right-of-ways. And it's hard to have an ordinance that's going to control and regulate an abundance of these devices left on sidewalks. You know, we may have an ordinance in place that allows us to remove them or requires the vendor to remove them. Um, but for example, two or three of the attorneys that I, that we hire, they practice in Orlando and they say, listen, you know, there, there's programs in place. It doesn't matter. There's hundreds of these devices left throughout the sidewalks, all around on the right-of-way, in the roadways. They're having accidents. Um, the, the, even the, when an ordinance is in place, it's not going to stop the problems or prevent the problems from occurring. So that's caused me a lot of concern because I, you know, in my opinion, I'm thinking, well, that's true. So much of the regulation of this and the activity of this is in the vendor's hands, meaning there could be a hundred and twenty-five devices out there. And those hundred and twenty-five devices, a very large portion of them could easily be left on our sidewalks. It could be abandoned in our, in our streets. Um, and the use and operation of those devices on our streets are most likely going to be, and from what I've heard and what I've read, most likely, especially in our situation being that the service area is going to be in the part of our town where there are typically tourists and guests and they're engaged in certain fun time activities. They may not be experienced users. Um, you know, those people that own their own personal devices and use them on a regular basis are most likely to be experienced. Most likely not going to be using them in a dangerous man, in a dangerous manner. But the guests that are here and visitors that are downtown, these are likely going to be inexperienced users. They may have never using, used a device like this. They may not be in the proper state of mind to be using a device on our city streets. And the operation of them are most likely going to be on streets that we all recognize are already heavily trafficked. Um, in particular on weekends and weekend nights. So, you know, in my discussions and in my research, I've, the, the, these are real serious growing concerns. And of course, hearing from our department heads, it appears that they have the same concerns. You know, our overall um purpose of entering the temporary moratorium was safety, public safety. And I still think that that's the primary purpose of us even looking at this program, potential ordinance. What serves the best for public safety? And my police off, our, our police officers have, you know, our commander has indicated to me that that's, he's extremely concerned about public safety with these devices. So um, my research has, in my consultation with some of our very experienced outside attorneys has led me to, to be very concerned about this. And um, we have been put on notice. I don't want to get too much into the details of this, but we've already been put on notice of a claim with an intention to sue the city of Jacksonville Beach. I would say for um an accident that occurred on one of our streets by a guest of our city who rented a device prior to temporary moratorium being put in place. Um, so we're already exposed to litigation for uh what has been alleged as uh, I would say a dangerous condition in our neighborhood. But I don't want to get into any more discussion about that in public, um, but just be aware that we are on notice of a lawsuit. Um, some of the other, some of the other issues we have, we've found, and I want to compliment Elise because Elise has also done a lot of research on this, but she found some valuable information just from city of Fort Lauderdale, which has had their program in place for a couple of years. Um, they've already confronted cases that involve the user, the device suddenly stopping and the user gets injured um because the device stops. There have been vehicular accidents involving the devices and, and cars, motor vehicles. Um, there have been claims of the device um going, you know, being driven over essentially the, what's alleged to be defective conditions. So missing bricks and sidewalks, dangerous conditions in the roadways. And losing, of course, losing control. So much like the claim that's been asserted against city of Jacksonville Beach, that user claims that they were caused to fall off and caused to lose control because of a condition that exists in our roadway. So um, Fort Lauderdale is seeing a lot of those claims. They've seen lawsuits based on those claims. And you know, I, I, I'm afraid to say that we, that this is our first one that we've received notice of claim of. And I, I would not expect for a guest to our, of our city who rents a device and finds themselves in an accident, they are most likely not going to take a hundred percent responsibility. Even if they've been drinking and enjoying themselves and they are confronted with um you know, medical bills for their injuries, they will find a way to at least try to assert a claim against the city of Jacksonville Beach for a dangerous condition that caused their accident. Despite that, it's perhaps their lack of experience, their own negligence and their own operation, their failure to operate it safely or follow directions um or to wear any safety devices, so on and so on. I, I just think that what I'm foreseeing and what we've seen so far, these are, this is one of those situations and, and kind of new products out there that could lead to a lot of claims and lawsuits. I, I just don't see people taking sole responsibility for their broken arms and broken legs and hip replacements and things like that. They're going to be looking for people to sue. It's going to be the city and the device operator, um, and the vendor. So we're, we would be a target. Um, I have, so, so those are some of my concerns. Um, but you know, I'm, I feel like I'm um supported by the department directors in that. Of course, there's many other concerns that just aren't related to litigation claims or risk exposure, you know, such as the fees that we would charge to implement the program, the application process. And of course, that's clerk type of information, planning and development in terms of zoning, what areas will we allow them to operate in. Um, so there are, there are so many topics. I would also share with council that you know, the, a lot of the department heads have, have asked me to suggest, you know, a ban, of course, but that, that is up to the city council. And if not a ban, then um a pilot program, because we, as department heads, we, we have a lot to, to learn through experience if something were to be implemented. We're, we're going to have to try to grow with this. Um, and again, hearing from some of my outside attorneys, they, they said, there's a lot of lessons to be learned that you will only experience through the growing pains. Some things you just can't really plan completely for. Um, so if not a band and a pilot program is what has been suggested, um, city of Jacksonville has a pilot program in place. I don't want to compare us, the city of Jacksonville, it's a much different situation, larger numbers, larger service area. Um, so you know, we, we have, we have our limitations. So those are, those are some of the concerns. In terms of a ban, um, we do have the authority and power to do that. The, the law that's currently on the books, it comes out of the first DCA, which is good for us. The court in that case actually describes the city as a small beach community that in, that encounters a great number of tourists. Um, and the, the, I mean, the, the city was Panama City Beach and the way that the court described the scenario, it could have been city of Jacksonville Beach. So we fit perfectly into that current law that's out there, the Florida statutes allow us to um allow you, the city council, to govern the operation of the devices and the scooters on the streets that are under our local jurisdiction and our control. So you do have the power to regulate these um to, to a great extent. It's not the regulation or limitation or prohibition of a personal use, but in terms of a commercial enterprise, you do have the ability to do that. And um, I, I just want to add that Kurt, Kurt DeWitt has been incredibly, you know, helpful, local business person, um, really, really helpful, likes, you know, as y'all know, and he's been communicating, he's been helping. Um, so I don't want this to be any reflection on Kurt DeWitt whatsoever. He's been a very, very responsible, professional um entrepreneur here in city of Jacksonville Beach. I'm just telling you what I've found through, as my legal consultant at council. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I have a stack of papers and resources. It's just difficult to know where you want me to start with it.
Well, Chris, we've got uh four council members have their hands raised.
Okay.
So we'll just go right down them in order. Uh, we're going to start with councillor Mesa and then go to councillor Dumont.
Great.
Yes, Chris, I, I share that your same concerns. I've been to Orlando multiple times as well. Uh, I've rented the scooters before. They're a lot of fun. Obviously, I was responsible. But one thing is uh, I tripped over a couple of them multiple times, the times that I've been to Orlando. I like the ordinance. Uh, what is it? Two vendors max, is it? I, I think so. I think it's great. I don't want to oversaturate the city with any more scooters. I don't think Kirk would be negligent. I think more of the people that are renting these scooters will be more negligent than anything else. And that is my concern. Like I've said before, I was on Second Street, right on First Avenue North on the two-way stop sign. I had to ride away. The guys on the scooters just ran a stop sign and I had to slam my brakes. Now, that is my concern as well. Uh, on the pilot program, I think we could do that. I like the pilot program. I'm not a big fan of banning things. That's just personal opinion. Um, but with the, the ordinance, I read pretty much everything and I, I don't have any, the only thing I know is on number three on page ten out of twenty-one from eight AM to eleven PM. My concern on that is on the weekends. Uh, especially once we start allowing festivals with the amount of traffic we get on First Street. I think eleven PM might be too late. Um, I'm, I already started seeing a influx of traffic on First Street on the weekends, especially with the nice weather. Uh, maybe ten PM. I don't know what other council members and the mayor feel about this. That's just my opinion. Uh, but everything else that I've read here, I, I think it's, it's something to work with. I don't know. Uh, I haven't talked to Kirk. Uh, and I would like to get his input and see what he thinks. That's all I have.
So with respect to the hours, there is, there will be, and I've began drafting that and putting that in this draft ordinance where the city manager would have authority and power to adjust the hours and days um when necessary. So this would allow the city manager to do exactly what, what you're saying there, Mr. Medze, which is, you know, if there's a city event or a downtown concert, or we block off some of the streets for certain purposes, any, any sort of special circumstance, the city manager would have authority to adjust the normal usage hours or dates.
And then one thing on the geo fencing, have you guys talked about what area the scooters would be allowed in and what areas they will not?
Sure, we have. And, and that, that leads to one of our primary concerns, which is, so for the northern border of the geo fencing area, this essentially would go right up to our northern border with Neptune Beach, so Seagate area. Now, um, currently Neptune Beach has temporary banned the operation of the devices in their jurisdiction. The information that I'm getting so far is that it appears that they're going to continue to have a ban of the devices. So in terms of the northern border, we're confronted with a situation where guests again are going to be anticipating that they can go all the way up to Atlantic Beach Town Center, um, which seems to be the natural path up and down First Street. As we all know, we do that on our bikes and we love, we love that. But guests are going to come to a, a wall for essentially right at Seagate. Um, one of my outside attorneys said that in their jurisdiction, they had the same situation where guests thought, well, they can keep on cruising. They weren't paying attention to the geo fencing area. They may have disregarded the information that the vendor gave them. Again, if, if Kurt, uh, you know, his company was the vendor, I'm sure he would provide proper geo fencing. He described that to us and he would make that information available for the get to the user. A lot of people don't pay attention to those as, as from what I've been told by some of my attorneys. Those people are going to be cruising right up to Seagate and it's going to lock, it's going to slow down, it's going to stop them. There's going to be a great deal of frustration that that's the northern border. And yet cannot proceed to Neptune Beach. We can't impose upon Neptune Beach to allow the, the users from our jurisdiction to go into Neptune Beaches because they've been banned by Neptune Beach. And um, apparently Atlantic Beach is on board with Neptune Beach. The, of course, the most eastern border is going to be essentially First Street because we are not going to allow Because we are not going to allow them to be on the promenade or the boardwalk area. However, it's been contemplated that they'll, users will at least be able to go to our end zones. Of our um, our jurisdiction beyond First Street. The south area, the south border is most likely going to be um, around the sixteenth street. However, um, it's been discussed that a lot of users may want to go all the way right into, you know, the Ponte Vedra Beach area. So the south end, um, as we all know, it's a little bit of an awkward border for us, it's not such a straight line as Seagate. So we would have to discuss that, that actual border, but I began to draft it up so that. Um, users potentially could go all the way to Ponte Vedra Beach Club. We may end up hearing from St. John's County and they may restrict that use. Terms of our west border, it's been pretty uniformly decided in terms of directors and department heads. That we would prevent the users from going over Third Street. So they would have to slow down to a slow zone, to a no zone. By the sidewalk on the eastern side of Third Street. It's very important to us, and you know, Commander Mark Evans, of course, has seen more tragedies, tragedies on Third Street than any of us. And um, it's a very, he's very concerned about that, he doesn't want to see any more fatalities on that road. And you know, he's concerned about the operation of the devices going towards Third Street. Making sure that they're slowing down in a safe manner and then stopping. Before they get to that sidewalk of Third Street. However, he's also concerned that he's, you know, people may think that the faster they go, they may be able to shoot across. Are they going to try to carry their devices across the other side? Um, so our police department has a lot of concerns about our, our western border. Um, but I've been told that, you know, there's the geo fencing, the vendors have a lot of control over geo fencing. And regulating the operation speed. In areas where they can go at normal speed, at a slow zone and at a no zone. But again, that kind of relates back to um, some of my points and some of the discussions I've had with other attorneys, which is that. You know, we're, how, how much of this responsibility and regulation? Do you actually have control over versus how much the vendor has control over and the users have in, out in the service area? So those are the four, those are the four borders and some of the concerns associated with the borders. Um, by the way, with regard to the end zones. Um, you know, one of the concepts of this program is corrals or parking areas or station areas where. The devices can be left parked at or left completely and turned off and then another user can come and use. There's, there's, there's two concepts, one is a corral or a parking area that's on private property. Versus any that may be left on, or, or, or inserted or installed on public property. So if, if we were to allow usage of the devices into our end zones. Council would have to make a determination as to whether they're in the end zones on public property, do you want us to create a corral? So a lot of the cities throughout America that have corrals, where the city and the vendor are working together in a program. They have created corrals on public property. From everything that councils told me, we're not in the business of micro devices here and not with e-scooters. Meaning we're not, and we're not in a co-partnership with a private vendor. So you would not necessarily be making a deal or an arrangement with your part, your private enterprise partner. To provide corrals on public property. And if you did, where would you want them? And, and if at our end zones, where do we put them? Do you join those corrals with also a new set of bicycle parking? Um, which we've been told we need that as well. So there's a lot of, a lot of concerns with respect to the zones and the borders. And, and I know Heather's not on, because we were both at CRA earlier tonight, she's still there. But she has a lot of great comments and insight about her suggestions for zoning and where, where corrals and, and. Points of use can be um, located throughout the city. So, so those are the zones, again, I, I have. You know, the police department has given me no indication that they want to see these things anywhere near Third Street, and I get it. They've seen a lot of pedestrian and bicycle deaths, so.
Uh, next up, we have councillor Dumont, followed by councillor Nichols.
Um, thank, Fernando's still, okay, his hands down, um. I've done a lot of research on these micro-mobilities and e-scooters, I didn't really know much about them, other than when I. Um, go to other cities, I see them a lot, they're really all over the place. And the data has shown that they've been a shock to the transportation system, um, actually throughout the world, because we're trying to cut down on cars. Um, move people around still, and like these e-scooters have been a godsend for the, what's considered the last mile. You take transportation somewhere and having get from where your car is, or where you dropped off to the actual destination that you want to get to. Because it's rare that you can actually just park outside the, the front door of where it is that you're trying to go. Um, so the, the world is still trying to figure out how to adjust their transportation. Um, criteria to these types of devices. Um. But um, what the data has also shown is they've identified, um, through research in major cities, they've identified some issues that. That municipalities really need to consider prior to uh, really allowing full usage of these micro-mobility devices. So um, the data showed that, uh, cities, there are three critical pieces. The first one is you have to be proactive in policies and um, Chris has done a great job with this draft. And you know, it, it, there's a lot more to go with it, so we're kind of on top of that because we put the moratorium in place in December. However, the next two, I don't think we're at where, where we should be if we want to reduce the city's risks for lawsuits. Um, the first one is uh, need to have clear and clarifying and action on enforcement. So uh, in the ordinance, it talks about how the micro-mobility devices will be treated, just like, you know. They, they have to follow the same rules of the road as the cars do. So are the police going to be able to pull everyone over who goes through a stop sign? In section thirty-one eighty-nine, subsection ten, we start getting into the. Ten and then fifteen, we start getting into all the different types of micro-mobility devices. And it goes more into enforcement the further you go into that one section. And are we going to enforce, and I don't think you can, um, enforce rented. E-scooters and the use of rented e-scooters differently than the use of private e-scooters. So are you only going to pull over those who are the rented e-scooters who go through stop signs and not the um, private e-scooter person? And so that, that has implications for everyone citywide, even if you don't go to or live in the, that geo-coded area. So that's something that's um. That's potentially very problematic for anybody who owns these devices and just normally scoots around the, the city. Uh, so the, the action on the enforcement's a big one, and the third one is you need to have prepared infrastructure. A lot of the lawsuits that municipalities are facing is like dips in roads, potholes, missing brick, uh, things like that. And uh, one of the studies is very interesting, because it talked about the, it compared bikes and the e-scooter. And they, when you're on a bike and you fall, your legs are free to stop the fall and, you know, better control it. But when you, something happens on the e-scooter, your body tends to fly off because you're not grounded like you are on a bike. I thought that was somewhat interesting. When we're looking at where they should be able to um, ride for Jack's Beach, we are, we already said off, not on the sidewalks, only on the road. Um, one out of three um, e-scooter users have some kind of an incident on the. Sidewalk versus the road, and that's like a, it can be a pedestrian encounter or something like that. One in five e-scooter users have a incident on the, the driving road. Which sounds like that's good, because we put them on the road. However, when you look at the severity of the injuries, the severity of the injury on the sidewalk is a lot less than the severity. Of the injury on the road, and that has to do with the speed of the cars um, and such. And the speed of the scooter as well. So they, it was noted that the injuries and fatalities in the, in uh, e-scooter usage is um. It's growing year over year. And so that's another area that I'm seeing risk, because if you get hurt, you want to always go with the entity with the deepest pockets. And people think that government has no bottom to their pockets when it comes to lawsuits. Um, so that's another piece that I, I am concerned about. Uh, with regard to, let's see, the. The, or the proposed ordinance. There are a couple of questions um, that I had, one is the, there's going to be two permits in the city. One hundred twenty-five for each permit holder, but who decides who gets to have the permit? I noticed further down, it's like first come, first served. Because there have been lawsuits against municipalities, because the municipality decides which company gets the scooter permit. And they have to defend the process through which they, they select one vendor and not another vendor. So what is the process that would be proposed here?
Right, so the process would be the first complete um, responsive application packet. That meets all the requirements of the application. So first come, first served, but with the qualifier that the application is proper and complete. So you know, if someone submits an incomplete application to us, then they may not be the first permit granted. Because they may be too, um, they may be missing information, but some, another vendor may provide us with the application packet that's complete that day.
And they, they, if they have, what is it, three, not fines, but three infractions against the company? That like, scooters around and such, even if they're not leaving them, they would go down the list, like they would.
They could, they, they could also potentially have their permit revoked, which they may be able to challenge on appeal. Um, but the um, city manager has also granted the authority to revoke or restrict the permit. If we find that they are not complying with the ordinance, if the ordinance was adopted. So we, we can't have a non-compliant vendor using one of the permits and causing a lot of problems for us. So we may suspend or revoke their permit. It's a privilege for them to be able to operate under the limited two permits.
Um, and with regard to LDC, I know Heather's not here, so I'm going to throw it in your lap. Because uh, you are here. The, when, when it comes to conditional uses for the corrals. Uh, there, is this going to go under a current conditional use in the code? Or are we going to have to change the code to add a corral as a conditional use in a specific zone?
We probably have to change the LDC, the, to conform to what situations we're going to see with this. Um, Heather and I did speak about it briefly, of course, she's the expert on it, but. We're probably going to have to make some amendments to certain portions of the LDC to account for this specific purpose and use. We, we're going to have to try to be as specific as possible when it comes to this program. To try to eliminate or at least prevent as many um, problems or challenges as possible. Uh, so yeah, there's going to have to be some conditional uses for every, every location. Where, for example, if a vendor has an agreement with four or five local businesses. There's going to have to be conditional exceptions for, conditional use exceptions for each location. Um, but let, let me also add to um, comment on a couple of the things you said, councillor Dumont, which was um, that. There, the regulate, the, two things, one is the purpose of this particular ordinance is. Guided at the regulation of commercially leased e-scooters, micro mobility devices. So this isn't designed to have an impact on the private, privately owned users of micro-mobility devices. In fact, we, we quite frankly are um, prevented in many ways from over-regulating. In violation of the Florida statutes that do permit particular usage of devices. So we can't get too regulatory of the use of the devices. Where our authority and power lies is the regu, through a ordinance that's not arbitrary or unreasonable. But it allows us to. Regulate for public health, safety and welfare, a business that operates in the jurisdiction. If essentially it's reviewed under what's called the rational basis test in um. The, the, the ordinance would just be essentially a, the least intrusive means and manner. To provide for public safety. And it's not arbitrary, it's not unreasonable, we're not regulating the use, we're regulating a business. That's operating for purposes of public safety, health and welfare. That's what the court, in the First District Court, a couple of years ago, said. So we're not, we're not trying to regulate use of it. If we were to ban it, for example, we're not regulating the use completely, because private owners can still use them. We do have some regulations already on the books in terms of our ordinance, um. You know, in place with respect to restricting the use on the promenade or the boardwalk. Restricting the use of those devices on sidewalks, for example, in sidewalk areas. We have that rule, that's okay, we're not, we're not in any way um, confronting, we're trying to. We can afford a statute in terms of use. But we are given the authority to regulate business operations for the purpose of street safety. We're allowed to regulate the use of our streets. And to do essentially, and to approve any ordinance essentially that. Again, it's just not arbitrary or unreasonable, but just serves a government purpose for public safety and welfare. If the council were to decide that, having a ban serves the public safety.
Yeah, what the part that I was getting, I, I understand not regulating an individual and his or her use of. Uh, a scooter, an e-scooter. The, but when we look at the proposed thirty-one eighty-nine subsection ten and eleven. We're not talking about the enforcement of the vendor, we're talking about the. Action that government would take against the user for not following traffic laws.
Yeah, and, and that's.
But like, if you had a, a rented e-scooter on the boardwalk, there's something we could do about that. But you could have a private person with their e-scooter, their private e-scooter scooting around right on the lawn. Would we expect the police to treat one different than the other?
No, however, they need to treat them all the same, and really it is a traffic violation for the most part. That they would need to be treated under. But what's happening in this situation is, so you have a commercial enterprise. That puts a hundred or more of these into a small service area of our city. The vendor can, may be regulated by our ordinance only to some limited extent. Once those users and a hundred or more users are in, in, potentially we have two hundred and fifty devices that are being rented. Those two vendors have lost a lot of power over those devices. They're now in the hands of potentially two hundred and fifty inexperienced riders. And also potentially dozens of, quite frankly, da- dangerous drivers of these devices. So you, fifty percent of this situation is the user end of it, fifty percent of it is the vendor end of it. We, we can't just completely throw our hands up and say, well, once the vendor rents those devices, we're not going to regulate their use. So we can regulate the business, but then we also need to try to control and regulate the use of dozens or hundreds of these devices at any given moment. This, of course, is a, is a police regulatory power that we have. But we, but we're confronted with a problem, we're going to have a lot of residents that own these personal devices. They're allowed to use them pursuant to Florida law. However, we're also going to have two hundred or more devices that are being rented from people from out of city, out of state. And honestly, what we witnessed leading up to the temporary moratorium, myself. Quite frankly, the city manager and I here at city hall and many staff members and um, police department officials. A lot of these users were not following traffic laws, they were running through stop signs and traffic control devices, they were up and down the sidewalks. And so, you know, our assumption was, this is turning into a dangerous activity. Of course, some of us saw the young lady that had her infant on her, in her, stuffed in her backpack and she's cruising down the. Running stop signs on these devices, so it was an immediate safety concern, obviously. City council reacted very quickly for safe, for public safety. So our police department's confronted with. So our police department's confronted with, you know, a dilemma here. We have the commercial vendor side users and then we have privately owned users.
And the police would have to treat them all the same.
We, the goal is to treat them all the same.
So somebody's on a rented e-scooter, runs a stop sign on First Street in the downtown area. They have the right to pull the person over and give them the citation.
Right.
This sa- would the same apply to, Chet has a scooter, Chet, um, in South Jacks Beach. Outside of the, the zone, and he goes through a stop sign, not that you would, but you looked both ways and you didn't stop. But you know, you didn't see a car coming. Um, he would be subject to a citation.
Right. Can I, can I interject real quick? Cause I remember looking this up, it's, we can be cited just like you can on a bicycle. It's in our, uh, code already that, uh, these, for a personal device is You're subject to the same rules as the bicycle, so I could one hundred percent get cited just like the Electric one or just like, you know, somebody else on a bicycle.
Right, and I'm, I'm well aware of that, but we also know that it's common that we don't do that. You know, and so the common practice right now is the police don't stop all the bicyclists going on first, not stopping on any of the stop signs. Um, and so when it comes common practice to do it in one part of the city, it has to become common practice to do it throughout the city. Because then you could fall into the, you're treating the E ones different than you're treating the other ones. So the, the reason why I bring this up is this is gonna be an unintended consequence To allowing the, to allow the operation from this and how it would negatively, negatively impact The residents who have these e-scooters, who are currently operating them kind of not willingly. But how we operate our bikes, you know, you look, but you don't come to a stop sign. But there, there's a, there's a possible, um, downside for them. I'm not sold on the need for the e-scooters, especially after reading a lot of the The research, the alleged damages usually end up over around, over thirty thousand. Um, injuries are on the increase and they are increasing in severity. I, I just see this as a lot of risk that the city takes on For the benefit of a private entity. And if we're gonna get sued, he'll most likely get sued as well, or at least the maker of the scooter will get sued. Or the, 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 the vendor person.
Yeah, the, the manufacturer, the, the vent, the local vendor and the city, those, those will be the three defendants in every lawsuit. Um, if I was a plaintiff's attorney, without doubt, I'd be suing all three. Uh, you know, my client broke her leg riding a e-scooter that I rent, that she rented From a City of Jacksonville Beach vendor, private vendor, and she was operating on the City of Jacksonville Beach street. All three would be getting sued. The, the devices are on, they are regulated under chapter three sixteen, which is the state Uniform Traffic Control Chapter. So, uh, just as, you know, Councilmember Stokes said, he understands that these are similar to bicycle operation. Bicycle operations are lovely golf carts and are, uh, Uh, those divide, those other carts that go through the lake, lakeside gate, those are all under chapter three sixteen. So they are all subject to Florida statutory regulations. Um, so yes, as we know, we have hundreds, thousands of bicyclists that come and go all around downtown. They run through the stop signs, it's, it's clear, our police department cannot keep up with that. Same with Neptune Beach and Atlantic Beach, there's hundreds of bicycles running stops on. With this program in place, you know, wi- without a commercial vendor. We've never heard the police department come to us and say, we're having a problem with e-scooters. So none of that existed in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Only when you begin to see the commercial leasing Of dozens, large numbers of these devices, did the police department start contacting us and coming to us and saying, we, we have a safety concern here. By allowing the commercial vendor programs into the various cities. They were inundated immediately with hundreds or thousands of the devices. So they went from just the few very easy to control number of private owners. Like Mr. Stokes, no problem, it's fine. But boom, you have a thousand now to deal with. And by the way, they happen to all be guests of your city. And they don't really know or care to pay attention to the regulations, the rules, the laws, and they're flying around and it's causing Public safety concern. And it's dangerous and risky. That's, that's the unique situation we're in. However, that user and the user such as Mr. Stokes, they need to be treated the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Counselor Nichols, followed by Counselor Stokes.
Thank you, Mike. I'll make this really quick. I know we're getting really late. Um, Chris, I really appreciate the effort you're putting into this. Um, I'm really on the fence with it now, the more I look into the safety issues for, for the community and, and for the people using them. It's, it's a real challenge. I mean, a lot of people get hurt on these things and it is gonna be a never ending. Um, we're gonna be sued nonstop. I mean, you're, it's gonna fill your plate from what, from what I've heard in other community. If we're gonna do it, I would probably be in favor of a, a short pilot project. The, um, you know, the one thing about Jacksonville Beach is they're really, i- it's, it's more of a fun thing. Because our, the distance that you would have to walk to get in our downtown is not a substantial, a substantial Distance. And we also have beaches, buggies, we have, we have a lot of other, um, last mile. We have other last mile options for people to utilize. Um, let's see, and then for the private scooters, it takes a very special person to be a private owner of one of these. Chet, not just kidding, um, but I, I, you know, I, I'm not concerned about, it's such a small Number of those and I don't foresee there being a, a very large explosion in private ownership. Uh, causing problems with these. Um, I did have a couple of projects late, um, downtown Jacksonville. Apparently DIA just turned on a year-long pilot project without thinking about it, so I'm very glad that we are. And thinking about it in detail, but two o'clock in the morning, there was a group of at least, at least seventy-five high school kids Out, like in a group, blocking all the traffic, um, just, uh, very, uh, difficult. And they're gonna have some major, major issues. I know that we are not, uh, like I said, Chris, you're doing a great job thinking about it. Um, I'm definitely on the fence, uh, the risk worth the, worth reward that we get from these. Um, may not be there in my eyes, but the, um, I guess the only question, Chris, I had for you, as you mentioned Neptune Beach and Atlantic Beach earlier, have they said no to these?
Right, so, so far they have temporary moratoriums in there. And I, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but my indications that I've received is that The ban seems to be the way that they wanna go. They do, like us, we all have a temporary moratorium on it.
With, uh, with a lot of things that we do, I, I, I do, I would like to, uh, you know, keep that in mind. Just with the three cities, one community philosophy to just make sure we're I mean, I prefer to be on the same page because if you can't, if you're limited where you can go. I think it's gonna cause a lot of problems. We're gonna get a lot of, uh, a lot of issues at, uh, that Seagate when you get up there. And I would imagine if we're gonna do this, that, I don't know, there's some additional signing or something that we could, that we could place at that north end And try to, uh, warn people, um, or if that's gonna be a violation of our, of what our standards are. And then the other issue is that just driving around, hey, the new roads and everything down here are great and then they, and they meet our city standard. As far as I know, but we also have a lot of areas that do not meet our city standard, and if somebody happens to have an accident in those areas, I mean, we're liable, we're, we're paying. So those are some of my concerns, but I do appreciate your effort, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, thank you. So, um, just to give a little information on two of those points. Um, so one of our attorneys that represents several cities in the central part of the state. She indicated to me that, that, you know, having the geo-fencing borders just wasn't enough for the users. They ended up putting up, the city ended up installing signs around their perimeter area. Um, warning users that they are approaching a no zone or a no use zone. And then honestly, people started to complain about having these signs there. So it was like another, another situation.
Sure.
The city installed signs to try to create public safety for these users and help them remain safe. And then they got complaints about having too many signs that were trying to promote public safety.
Sure, i- it is a, it is a type of visual pollution and, and just, you know, the, the quality of life Um, for our residents, maybe for our visitors, it'll be better, but for our residents, uh, that's my concern. I mean, they're, they're first over the, over the visitor, for me.
Right, and then the second issue of, about the use of our streets, you mentioned, um, you know, our, our streets aren't designed, for example. Our, as I talked to our public works personnel, um, and in particular this claim that we got, that this particular person claims that our Street wasn't safe for her, which I can't wait to defend, but the streets are not designed for skateboards, for example. They're, they're not designed for the wheels of a brand-new e-scooter device That wasn't contemplated in engineering or the installation of a city street. Now, our city bike paths are designed for bicycles and the tires and the, and the use of that area by a bicyclist. The streets aren't designed, engineered or installed or developed for e-scooters. Um, those that have bike lanes are developed for To, you know, cars, trucks and typical vehicles that are gonna travel, including bicycles. So when you see a skateboarder who may crash on one of our city streets and claim that there was a small dip in the street. Well, to a motor vehicle or a bicycle, that dip is hardly noticeable whatsoever. To an e-scooter user who's inexperienced, in particular, she may, she or he may have absolutely no way to control And loss of control and, um, may claim that that is actually a hazard. Well, it's not a hazard. But for an e-scooter doesn't know how to, a e-scooter user who doesn't know how to safely operate that. And it becomes the hazard because she doesn't know how to use the e-scooter properly on the city street that wasn't designed for e-scooters, so.
No, no, I, I understand that, but if any, if any cross slopes are greater than, than the road was designed for. I mean, you can go back and pretty much look at any road, the, the friction on the roadway, the Any thermal plastic, anything else that if it's not done per our standard, then it becomes a opening for liability.
Right.
Okay, next is, uh, Counselor Stokes, followed by Counselor Mesa.
Thanks, um, as, you know, we've heard a couple of times how I own one, um, and, uh, Either to, to Cory's point there, Mr. Nichols, to Mr. Ambrosio's point. Um, you know, I, I ride it like I ride a bicycle, um, you know, uh, the roads to their point. You've, you've gotta be careful, uh, if you hit a manhole cover on one of those things, it gets shaky. Um, I've been, I've never had an issue personally, that's me. I know how to operate it. I've operated them in cities for rent. I own one, I know how to operate it, I know how to operate a bicycle. There's people that ride the streets that don't know how to operate a bicycle safely. Um, you know, that's, so that's, you know, it is a very valid point there that I do see. Um, I've got kind of a, a long list of questions I kinda came up with. In the interest of the time, I'm gonna put them in writing and submit them to, to Mr. Ambrosio. And, uh, Mr. Stephanopoulos, and that way they can review and review to the council as necessary. Um, because when I read through this, there is kind of a lot of issues I have, and, and I have a scooter. And you won't find somebody who wants proper regulation more than I do. Because I see the issues that it could cause, um, if we don't do anything. Um, and we, uh, but, but I'm also one that I, I would not like to see a ban. Because I, I just don't, I don't believe in that. I believe that it's a good means to traverse the city. I believe it's good for visitors and residents alike to traverse the city and I, and I hope that it can be done responsibly. But that's the key word to me is responsibly, and I think this ordinance is very important to preserve that Um, for the future. Now, kinda tonight, the issue is, is do we want, uh, A pilot program or to just go out full blasted? I would really hope that we get a very sound ordinance before we do both. I would be okay with a pilot program, uh, or a full-fledged program. But I think that we need, our ordinance needs to be buttoned up top-notch. I mean, we spent a lot of time on animal code. And it was already an ordinance on the books. This is a brand-new ordinance, so I think that we need to take our time. If, if this ordinance, you know, if it doesn't get passed until the time the moratorium is up. I don't think that's a huge issue. I talked with Mr. DeWitt and he's almost in the same boat. He doesn't need to rush these scooters out, he wants to have, uh, a, a proper ordinance. I wanna have a proper ordinance and I own one, so I think that's super important. Um, and I think that it, it's something we should really focus on and not rush, rush a pilot program. Not rush, uh, a full-fledged program until we, we have something pretty sound. One thing I did, I, one question I wanted to ask tonight and, and is on thirty-one ninety-two, Chris. It talks a lot about the indemnification and insurance. You mentioned a lot of litigation issues. Is there any way to put some protection in that thirty-one ninety-two? It's, it's got, it seems like it's got a lot of protection in there already, but obviously, like you said, if somebody falls. They're gonna try to sue all three. It's just whether we have a leg to stand on where the court will throw it out.
That's a great point. So thirty-one ninety-two provides, um, for a very extensive Indemnification provision in terms of the program and the law, our local law. The vendor would have to agree to this indemnification now in order to obtain a permit. It's part of the application process. So, once they get to that point, they've submitted their application, they've signed off on the permit request and the application. If they're granted the permit, and they have already agreed to this indemnification provision, which really covers us well. But what would happen is, there's an accident by a user. The user sues all of us, like I said, the city, the local vendor, manufacturer, most likely. And the argument is going to be from the vendor that this provision is invalid. Despite them having gone through the process of agreeing to it in order to obtain their permit, they've recognized it and signed off on it. Ultimately, their insurance company is going to argue that it's an invalid, um, indemnification Provision required by law in that That insurance company is not going to or refuse to provide us with indemnification in defense. And then we will get into a second level of litigation, which is essentially insurance defend, uh, insurance indemnification litigation. Where not on, not only do we have the plaintiff lawsuit against us for their personal injuries. But we're gonna have our insurance company and their insurance company involved in litigation, which involves us. Claiming that this is an invalid in, or valid indemnification provision. And they're gonna be asking for a judge to make a determination whether The vendor's insurance company does actually owe us indemnification in a defense For the lawsuit that the plaintiff brought. So I could draft the greatest indemnification clause here, but when someone, a user falls and injures themselves. The insurance company for the vendor is gonna challenge me on it. It's gonna happen. Because they're just not gonna hand over hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay for someone's broken leg. Because the insurance company for the vendor is going to say, the reason that person broke their leg is because the city was responsible For having a dip in the road. And this indemnification provision is invalid and we're gonna fight Because we're not gonna pay a hundred thousand dollars or more for this injured plaintiff.
So, is there any, so you mentioned Fort Lauderdale as one, is there any in the state of Florida? Is there, is there any legal precedent that we, that we know of that's going to
Have that.
Help that, help that case, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so far I, I don't have that, I haven't been able to find that. Um, but keep in mind that a lot of these accidents and that turn into claims or lawsuits Are most likely, like much civil litigation, ninety percent or more are being settled outside of a court. So you don't necessarily have, I don't necessarily have the opportunity to go onto my legal research engine And pull up a court opinion and a final judgment, um, that describes the scenarios that I'm describing for you here. But what is happening is there's litigation, all these battles are occurring. And then ultimately, like in most litigation, there is some resolution or settlement. Comes down to some, you know, everybody agreeing to something and. Comes down to some, you know, everybody agreeing to something, and everybody being unhappy with something. The type of mediation, you're kind of happy and not. That's typically what happens. So in terms of published cases that I can find, that's not going to be very easy to find. You know, quite frankly, if we got caught up in the scenario that I just described, nine out of ten times, we're going to end up settling that case. And so you won't be able to go on to, you know, into a legal research engine and find out all the details of the final judgment, the ruling.
Yeah. Chris, I think you did a great job on the first draft. You and Elise did a lot here. Like I said, I think we got to really take our time on this one and not rush it and not rush any programs.
Thank you.
Next is Counselor Mesa, followed by Mayor Hoffman.
Yes, if we were to move forward with this, the other question I have is, let's say we have a huge weekend downtown. Can we or are we allowed to limit the amount of scooters that are rented out throughout that certain day? Or is it just, okay?
Yeah, we are allowed by law to regulate that. Again, it's public safety, and we have the power and authority to regulate using devices and traffic on our streets and our local jurisdiction. It's the ability to do that, and the council can legislate that into its ordinance to afford the city manager to have those powers, the numbers, the areas, the hours. Those are all authorities and powers that you have and that you can assign to the city manager and your ordinance.
Yeah, and also, I went downtown the week the scooters were introduced, and yeah, some people should not rent these scooters. They're not responsible. Yeah, I just, downtown is a whole different story. I don't want to see that here. But I also want to see some kind of legislation, and that we're doing this, and Chris, it's good draft. Good job.
Thank you.
Mayor Hoffman, followed by Counselor Golden.
Thank you. Can you hear me? So, just a point of information question from earlier. Do we already not allow motorized vehicles on the boardwalk?
We don't allow them on the boardwalk.
Okay, so private or rental, the bikes with the motors, none of those are allowed on the boardwalk, no matter what?
That's right, right.
Okay.
They prohibited, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think that the point of Georgette's point of the last mile and Cory's point that these are, in our case, are really more recreational. I totally get their functionality in a larger city to get you from that bus stop or subway station or whatever to the office, or from the office to lunch, or what have you, and they're really useful in that. But in our case, I think they are basically largely going to be recreational use. So my enthusiasm for them is definitely simmering for that, because of that thought. They're not necessarily that functional piece of transportation that they are in bigger cities, but also just seeing the reaction in downtown Jacksonville and then the guy on his personal scooter who almost went across my windshield. And it wasn't Chet, but he's lucky he's fine. He ran the stop sign. So I'm calming down on this a little bit, but just kind of thinking outside of the box in terms of if we were to pursue a pilot program, can we just, I mean, we're assuming the model, the Limebird model, where you can just pick up a scooter anywhere and hop on it and go. What if we did it more like how people can rent a bike? Or even, I know years ago I rented like little Vespa scooters one time. What if we did it more like that, and we had Beachlife Rentals or whoever the provider was, you could rent a scooter for a certain amount of time, you check it out, and then you check it back in? I feel like there would be some more responsibility, some of the logistic issues that we talked about a lot in January. We haven't talked about them as much today, but we could avoid some of those being left on the street, things like that, so they would take away some of that element. Is that something that's been considered? Is it even worth looking into, just kind of flipping the model versus what we're seeing in the bigger cities?
Yes, we have considered that, and actually, that is a better program for us if not a total ban. It would be easier for us, and I think promote more public safety and safety on our roadways, if there were less corrals or areas around the city where they can be rented. The fewer number of those helps us in terms of the public safety sense. If there was one central location from the vendor's main office, for example, that would help. That would help. You know, some of the discussions that we've had are potentially a vendor might have five or six different locations where these are located. There's going to be a rebalancing or redistribution, meaning that if they were to have one hundred and twenty-five units, that these, you know, five or six locations are going to have fifteen to twenty, twenty-five scooters, and those are going to be spread out throughout our city, well, at least within the service area. Of course, for the police department, that's going to be much more difficult to regulate. It's also going to be much more difficult for planning and development to be sure that all the zoning requirements are being complied with. Also, that would create a great opportunity for the devices to be left in places that are more spread out. If the program that's in place requires the user to bring the device back to the central location, that helps a lot. It helps. The rentals from one central location, the return is required to be at a central location. And again, that really proves that this is a recreational use. For example, in Austin, Portland, two cities I researched, you'll find that, you know, like you said, Mayor, those are large cities. You have people that live twenty blocks outside of downtown Portland that come into downtown Portland to work every single day. Well, Portland, you know, they want to cut down on vehicle traffic, of course. They want to have the e-scooters come in. We don't have that situation. We don't have anybody that's going to be riding in a scooter, you know, to work. I mean, I haven't heard that yet. I don't know. Mr. Stokes might do it, but we don't really have that. And, you know, to contemplate one central location for rental, going out, using them on a recreational basis, coming back and returning it, I mean, that's the purest form of recreation, is similar to like, you know, when you rent a kayak or canoe at a lake. Well, you go off, you come back, you bring the kayak back. You don't leave the kayak at the other end of the lake. Same thing, same concept.
I think it would also dictate the hours, because the provider is not going to want to be waiting around till eleven o'clock to get those things back. So I could see that just the natural use would be daytime hours when they're already operating their rental program. But I could also see dropping off a couple scooters at Margaritaville for the people that have ordered them or whatever, and then they come and pick them up at Margaritaville at the end of the day, or something like that, so that we wouldn't have to worry about them littering. And I'm just thinking out loud, I thought of this in January and didn't bring it up since it seemed like we were kind of on this path. But I think there's some, I think we're all kind of in the middle of the road, no scooter pun intended there, that, and I agree with Chet, I think it's worth doing this right and safely, and that our staff, especially our police department, can feel at least relatively assured. And if we can do a pilot that dictates this type of a business model, then maybe we grow into something later if we see that it's something that we can do successfully. But I'm fine continuing to ease into this.
And some of, those are some of the critical questions that, you know, honestly, I know it's, we're running late already, and I can't, I'd have to get direction from council at some point, because a significant part of this program is, will the council allow corrals to be, a number of corrals to be zoned, or at least conditionally permitted around the city? If the answer is no, then the ordinance takes a completely different shape. I mean, there's no discussions about, there's no material I work on for corrals. There's very, a much more reduced concern about governing those corrals, going through the conditional use process, the fees that are associated with applying for those conditional uses at various locations. So I know we can't accomplish it all tonight. It's seven thirty. I'll stay on as long as you want, but I know you guys will kill me if we keep talking. But there are four or five very critical elements to an ordinance, even with a pilot program, that at some point, you may, I may, I think I am going to ask council for me to bring this topic back for another briefing discussion where we get into the nitty-gritty of what you want to see in the ordinance. Because for me to continue to draft it, even if council is directing me to draft it as a pilot program, then I need to really start to, you know, sink my teeth into a ordinance, proportions you want out, proportions you want in of your pilot program. And keeping in mind that whatever we put in there in that pilot program ordinance, those are, as we've agreed, one, to serve public safety, but two, elements of the program that you want to observe and we want to learn from over however long you want that pilot program to be. So if, you know, I would need council's direction as to what do you wish to get out of a pilot program? Because at the end of our pilot program, you're either going to tell me to kill this program, to continue the ordinance and add to it, modify it in some way, but we need to be able to learn at the end of our pilot program. So I would ask that, you know, Mike and council at some point decide for this to be another topic so that I can really now get to the second stage of a pilot program ordinance, if that's how you'd like me to proceed. And then, you know, frankly, I need to then meet with the department directors so that we can see that as our second step. So our first couple of steps were, let's meet to at least get council some form of a working draft of ordinance so they can see some of the elements, the key elements of what the ordinance would be. But if you would like a pilot program, then I need to re-group with the directors and say, "Okay, here's the pilot program and the key elements that the council would like to see." And say, nine, twelve months later, we're going to be revisiting this. We need good information that we've learned to come back and help educate the council and make further decisions. So we might need another briefing topic on this, briefing scheduled for this topic.
Yeah, we may, and I know we've got Counselor Golden with her hand raised. Counselor Golden, you haven't said anything yet, so let's go with you, and then I've got a couple of comments I'd like to throw out for council consideration.
So, I just, I'm not going to repeat a lot of what everybody else has said, but I will say this has been a very, very good discussion. I want to thank you, Chris and Elise, for all the work that you've done and the research that you did too. I share your concerns, and I share the concerns that the department heads have, and I think those are, that's important, that as a council, we need to take those concerns into account. I did talk to Mr. DeWitt. I will say that he is concerned about safety as well, and so I don't have any doubt that he is going to be willing to work with us on whatever we decide to do. As to the recreational use discussion, I agree. I feel like if they're just used in our downtown area, then it is more of a recreational use. However, if the other beaches decide that they want to have the scooters as well, well, then the scooters are no longer recreational, because they can be very functional to get you from Jax Beach to Atlantic Beach or whatever. But for now, if we're the only ones that are going to be doing anything, then definitely it is strictly recreational. And so I like Mayor Hoffman's idea about the bicycle rental model, where, you know, I think that simplifies everything for us, and we start with baby steps. We don't try to do everything right off the bat, and we just, yeah, we just take everything in baby steps. But I am definitely on the same page with Chet that I think we need to take our time on this and really make sure that we have something good in place before we launch anything.
Thank you, counselor. And what I was going to throw out was a couple of reminders. The first is that we're only three months in on what was a twelve-month moratorium. So we still have plenty of time to make decisions with regards to this particular ordinance, if that's the direction that we go. The second was, and Counselor Golden, I appreciate you bringing it back up, is the issue of Neptune and Atlantic Beach to our north, more particularly Neptune Beach, because it really doesn't matter what Atlantic does, but if Neptune does end up banning e-scooters, then they would have to illegally traverse through their community to get up to the town center. So the first thing I wanted to throw out is, would council like to wait a few months and see what ultimately happens with Neptune and Atlantic, whether they do an outright ban or whether they do some type of regulation? Because clearly, I think that would change the model that we're looking at for exactly the reasons that were just expressed. So is there a desire to wait to see what Neptune and Atlantic do over the next few months before you actually move forward with anything? The second would be, and this is a question more for Chris Ambrosio, I'm presuming, Chris, that we would have the ability to regulate the, not just the number of corrals, but the location of corrals. So if we wanted to, let's say, one of the two licensed vendors or either licensed vendor could only establish corrals at hotels, would that be something that we could regulate by ordinance in order to promote the true recreational nature of the rental as opposed to allowing them at any commercial property within the geo-fenced area?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I just, so that option of trying to force or trying to direct this model towards being more of a recreational amenity does appear to be something that we can regulate and create.
Yes, absolutely. And Mike, before we go too off the topic, when you mentioned observe or wait to see what AB and NB do, let me point out that I believe both beaches have a one-year temporary moratorium in place, and the attorneys have shared with me that there does not seem to be any motivation or any sense of hurrying to make a decision. So we may see AB and NB not touch this again for another ten months, nine months.
But they also, on that point, though, they may even look at us if we do come up with a recreational, you know, kind of day rental model. It may make sense for Neptune Beach to adopt that sort of a strategy, because that's just less traffic, less parking issues for their restaurants and businesses. So I don't want to wait on them. I think they should be watching what we do.
And they very well may be.
I'm seeing some other heads nod, so, Chris, it sounds like we may want to bring something back at a future briefing with maybe some tweaks to the proposed ordinance based on what we've heard here tonight.
Mike, I have a question. If we're trying to do this and we're looking at Neptune Beach possibly following us, then we move away from the recreational model to the transportation model?
Well, I think that's going to be a question for council when we come to what I'm presuming would be the adoption of a pilot program. It sounds like everyone wants to make sure that we take this slowly and don't rush into anything. So I'm even seeing heads nod now as we say the word pilot program. So I think what we're talking about is the structure of a pilot, and keeping in mind that a pilot program is meant to be modified. I think Chris hit the nail on the head that it's something to learn from. So we might be talking about putting a pilot program in place and then revisiting it every three months for a six-to-nine-month window to see what we've learned and what we may want to change for a permanent ordinance.
And I think that my point of being able to rent it, you know, for a half-day or whatever, it could be recreational, but could also be functional. I think the idea of Neptune Beach wanting, I mean, yes, it changes the use, but it wouldn't change my recommended strategy of having like the point of rental and return versus just leaving them out and about. So it would just be more of a different model than what we're seeing with the Limebird, those types of companies.
Right, and the model that we've got drafted into the ordinance is that they are rented from a location, and they have to be returned to a designated location on another private property at a private corral. So obviously, if there's a desire to make it truly recreational, where it has to be returned to the same location that it was rented from, then Chris could structure the ordinance such that it's restrictive. The licenses for a set location, and the vehicle must be rented from and returned to that location. The way we've set it up is it's incumbent upon the license holder to go knocking on other commercial property doors to determine whether or not they can get a conditional use and the acceptance of that owner to allow for a private corral on their private property. So if there is a restaurant somewhere in the downtown that wants to participate with a vendor, they would have to go through the conditional use process, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but they would have to go through the conditional use process and then have a private corral set up on their private property. So someone could rent from point A, travel to point B. So someone could rent from point A, travel to point B, park the scooter on private property while they dine or grab a bite to eat. And then ultimately could get back on the scooter and ride it back to point A where they originally rented it from.
That's right.
But it, but it could not be left on the sidewalks. That would be prohibited and result in the scooter being picked up, taken to the police station and the business owner being levied to find.
Right. And the corrals would have to be defined and provided and designated when the application is made so that planning and development can view that and approve that as a conditional use area where that corral is going to actually be. I won't get into the, all of the nuances and details of the different types of corrals that are out there. But yeah, that's a conditional use through planning and development that have to get approved. And then, um, ultimately I think I drafted it in here so that if, and then once the permit was already approved and the vendor is in operation, if they want to add other locations, then they'd have to go through that permitting process, get a conditional use, planning development, pay the fee. All of which you are allowed to regulate.
Counselor Jansen?
Uh, Chris, I'm assuming that, um, if we did a pilot program, it would, the, the timeframe would, could fall outside the timeframe of the moratorium? Or would that, would be, be bound by that? Or how, how would that work?
Right. Well, the way that our temporary moratorium reads is that it's going to remain in effect until you, council has approved a, a permanent ordinance that essentially would override the temporary moratorium status. But I, I can draft something up that clearly, you know, makes, makes it very clear for the public that the temporary moratorium is now concluded. The pilot program ordinance number one, two, three is instituted as the ordinance in effect. Now, I can make it very clear. There's no question. Pilot program's in effect. Temporary moratorium's been lifted. Because we, you know, originally when we confronted the temporary moratorium emergencies, conditioned that we all confronted. So we didn't talk about a pilot program at that time. At that point, we, council was discussing, we'd like to have, we'd like to have a temporary moratorium. Definitely, let's do that for public safety. So we'd like the city attorney to start to look into and prepare an ordinance that would allow these commercial, commercial vendors to operate in a particular area of our city.
Chris, I understood Dan's question a little bit differently, that what, it's going to take a while to update the LDC and design a pilot program. What happens if the temporary moratorium expires prior to the pilot kicking off?
Sorry, yes. That helps. Um, I'm sorry if that's what you meant, Mr. Jansen. I wasn't sure. We can extend the temporary moratorium if you'd like. I can do a new ordinance. I can amend the ordinance. You have the power and authority to extend the moratorium. You'd like to do that? So if we get closer to December of this year and we see that that is necessary and that's what you direct me to do, I can handle that for you. Of course. But we wouldn't want to allow the temporary moratorium to expire by time. And let me, let me just pull it up real quick. So as a reminder, sorry, that's not it. It is dated December 9th, 2020. And let me, let me just comment real quickly again, again, about Mr. DeWitt. Mr. DeWitt, by the way, was of course our only vendor at the time and he was extremely compliant with everything, as you all know. I just wanted to point that out. The minute that temporary moratorium was instituted, he contacted me for clarifications that he was definitely going to follow the law and he did. So, um, temporary moratorium worked out perfectly for what council's intentions were and Mr. DeWitt was a very responsible business owner. Um, I'm sorry, the, the, the more, the ordinance was dated December 21st. I worked on it on December 9th. I apologize. So it was authenticated and approved on December 21st, 2020.
So we're roughly nine months away from the expiration of that moratorium. In the event that council were to, uh, put a pilot program in place in the next three months or so, that would give us about a six-month monitoring window. And as the city attorneys pointed out, we could always extend that moratorium if necessary and continue with a pilot program if more information were needed or if the council wanted to tweak the program the way it was operating and, and what you've heard or seen for feedback at that time.
I have a quick question. When did Kurt start renting out the e-scooters? Was it right before COVID or right around COVID? I can't remember.
Right. I'm not sure. And I, I, I understand it's a briefing, so Mr. DeWitt can't reply. But I think, I think it was actually well, well after that, because I don't think we started to encounter them until the summer of 2020. So Mr. Mesa, I don't, I don't remember seeing them in March, say, beginning of, when we were experiencing COVID. That, that, it really started to hit us as a, as a, so, okay, so Mark Evans has given us a thumbs up. It was more like the summertime going into the fall, we started to see them. And then, um, Mike and Peter Evans and myself, we started to also see them stationed in position at various hotels. And then we would see them on the streets. So that was really the end of summer and beginning of fall.
Just a thought, I mean, spring and summer's picking up. If we were due to a pilot program, I think it'd be a good opportunity to have it in place just to see how it works in our community in downtown. You know, obviously with, with the, with the amount of people that come in, we could judge it and see if it's something that we as a community want. And if not, you know, that's just my thought.
I think we had some really good, uh, dialogue from council tonight on this particular topic. The city attorney and I, along with some of the individual departments, will put our heads together and plan on bringing this back to you at an upcoming briefing in the next month or two with, uh, some additional options for you to consider on how to move forward. But I think we've got an idea of, of what some of your concerns are and, uh, how we may want to proceed going forward. Okay. Um, with that being said, I know it's 7:50. I know everyone wants to get off the line. But I did have, um, just a couple of clearing house items to talk to council about really quickly. The first one is you may have seen that we received an email, uh, earlier today regarding a supposed festival that's going to be had within our municipal boundaries at the end of June. I just wanted to assure all of the council members, we have processed no special event permit for any festival that will be occurring the weekend of June 18th and 20th. We are understanding that there's a group of individuals that are looking to potentially try and come down to Jack's Beach. Uh, but with that being said, I just wanted to reassure you that there have been no permits issued for any type of festival that would be occurring, uh, at the end of June. The second thing is to let you know that, um, we did make the, the formal decision today, uh, to cancel the, um, opening of the beaches parade, uh, the parade in particular. While the vaccines are still rolling out and, and they're going at a pretty good pace and the governor just dropped the age limit to 50. Uh, we do have some concern, concerns with the logistics of actually holding a parade at this time and having, uh, that many people in close quarters, um, in our downtown. And we did also want to report that the Easter egg hunt for April 3rd will continue at Wingate Park. The Wreckin' Parks Department can appropriately stagger the Easter egg hunt by age group and have appropriate time settings for when those, uh, events occur, such that we feel that that would be, uh, an appropriate event to move forward with. And those were the last things I wanted to put on your radar before the end of the briefing tonight. With that being said, I've got nothing else for council. And if you've got any questions for me, I'll be in the office tomorrow. Feel free to give me a call. But chances are you'll probably hearing more information from us in the future on a couple of other topics. Uh, Counselor Jansen, you have a question?
Yeah, real quick. Are we going to put any kind of public statement out about the, um, festival in June?
We're meeting on that tomorrow, uh, myself, uh, the police department and several other representatives from the organization.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. And if that's it, I will thank you all for your time this evening and everybody have a good rest of the night. We'll talk to you later.
Good night, everybody.